A little more mature than like the elementary kids, but they're still at a trick or treating age.
Yeah.
Hey Darrell. Chuck here. I couldn't make the meeting on Tuesday. So it might be a better question for Zach, but maybe you were Jeff know. A couple of weeks ago, the fire department was talking about an alternative, their old Halloween party. I don't want to be specific because I don't know if they've decided to do it or not.
They're still considering that, which was having the fire trucks go out to different neighborhoods and distribute candy or something else.
Great fun idea. I just didn't know. I didn't want to raise it if Zach hadn't decided to do it or not, but.
It's not a definite yet because there's still logistics to be worked out, but.
That's a, that's a nice schedule so I can be in front of my, in my front yard when they go by.
Okay. Yeah. They're retrofitting the hoses to shoot out candy. All right.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. At next meeting, I'm sure we'll mandate that all the kids have to dress like surgeons. Okay. So again, actually I did, I did have one question. I read the email right from Matt that we're up to yellow now. We have.
Yes. Actually, I'm glad you mentioned that because I did mean to, to indicate and I'm going to be posting as soon as I get a moment to the website to let people know. Yeah. Cause cases went up in both Dover and Sherburne. So, and we've been looking at everything as combined, which is reasonable in terms of sports teams playing the others in our cluster. The TVL subcluster that we're in. So.
Okay. So that means when we look at ourselves in that state map, Dover and Sherburne will now be yellow now versus usually uncolored.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I just don't think it's good information. All right. So if that's not it, and I don't know if we want to stick around, I don't. Um, we'll see the next.
The groundwater I, I'm gonna stay for.
Okay, yeah.
We're a board who appoints someone to that as well. So.
Okay. So item number three, you have a review groundwater protection committee applicants and then possible appointment, appointment to the committee. And I'm just going to confirm with Diane, I believe this has been advertised for 30 days. Is that correct Diane?
Yes.
Yes, it has been. It's been advertised in the newspaper, on the website and the bulletin board.
That sounds, that sounds pretty thorough. That's very good. And I believe two members are appointed by the Board of Selectmen, correct?
Correct.
And we have two applicants before us right now. Is that correct?
That's it. That's all the applicants that came forward.
Okay. It looks like we have Tom, Thomas Trainer and Melinda O'Neil, both of which have been very active in town in general and I think bring a pretty good skillset. Tom obviously has a strong chemistry background. Melinda's been very strong with the, um, the farm pond committees. I guess, is there any, did I miss anything? Or is there anything more to discuss about this?
I'm just curious. So somebody contacted me who's also interested in doing this. I assume because they have Board of Health interest or something, or had previous, who knows, for whatever reason, do they just apply through there? And then you can forward that name to us because the Board of Health needs to appoint someone as well. I am currently the appointee, but. I can't squeeze any more seconds out of a day. So.
So I would think, I would think Diane, you could, if you got, I think it probably would work easiest to have applicants apply the same way other ones did. And then they can, she can forward them to the Board of Health.
Correct. If they said, they can contact me, I'll send them an application and then I'll forward it right over to the Board of Health and they can do their appointment.
Okay. So is that just how appointments do work for everything versus normally what the Board of Health has done in the past is interviewed people who were interested and then.
You can still do that Darrell. Once you receive the applicants, you can still bring them in and interview them. And then the Board of Health would, if it's, you know, if it's a joint appointment with the select board, you can make a recommendation and. Iron it out that way. And then the board can interview just.
Oh, but this is not a joint appointment.
Right. Exactly. So you, you can interview them as you see fit and make the decision.
Okay. But I'm just trying to figure out, it's required that they go through the application, filling out the application? It's just extra time for somebody. So that's what I'm trying to figure.
We, we had inquiries about this committee and they were sent applications, but they didn't return them. So we really, we just don't chase people down. We take those that are interested enough to fill out a one-page form and get it back to us. If somebody comes in and didn't fill out the form, it's really, it's up to you on whether to accept them and. Consider them as an applicant or not.
Okay. So one of the questions on the application is, have you taken the ethics training? I think is one of, one of them. Or some training that we take when we're a part of boards and committees. But that's going to be no for just about everybody. And maybe they feel that's an obstacle. Can that be made more clear on the.
Yeah, we could add on the form that it's not required to apply.
That would be better, I think, because people have expressed concern over that. And that may be what stops them from returning it.
Yeah, mine is pretty easy.
Yeah. So Eric. Eric, can I move that we appoint Tom Trainer and Belinda O'Neil for a term. Expiring on June 15th, 2023.
Okay. I just want to make sure though that, so Darrell, your questions are answered administratively. You can hook up with, with David also. I just want to, don't want to cut that off completely.
Okay. Cause there are a couple of other people I know of who are interested. So.
Okay. After we take this vote, I actually have a couple more comments on that. Okay. So we have a motion right now from Paul. A second.
Then the motion to have them appointed to the groundwater protection committee.
Yep. All right. So all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Chuck?
Mine.
George?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Now, what I, what I wanted to add is that keep in mind this total of, I believe a total of nine members is appointees by Conservation Commission, Board of Health, Planning Board, Water Commissioners and Elderly Housing. For some reason, but maybe that made sense back in 1994. So what I care more about is like, how does this initially start? So Darrell, are you the, are you basically the de facto chair of this right now? Would, would, when everyone gets their appointees together, would that maybe go through the select board office just to kind of gather the names? And if you're the, if you're kind of the only pre-existing one Darrell, would you essentially call the first meeting together?
Uh, don't know.
That's kind of wondering because usually, usually when you remake these things up, but you know, we restart whole committee, you have someone that's kind of been there before. We did that with land acquisition. Like I wasn't there the first time, but I was there on the remake and Frank Jenkins was, um, you know, there from previously. So he kind of got everyone together right there. I guess, I guess that's just something logistically we gotta figure out. Cause at some point, yes.
I would say that.
We do. Like when the Public Safety Committee was started.
Okay.
We arranged for the first meeting and then the committee voted their chair and they were off and running.
Yeah. George?
Just a question. I know Darrell, I know the Board of Health has an appointment. What's the other, remind me again, where, isn't there another board that has an appointment as well?
Yes. So Conservation Commission, Board of Health, Planning Board, the Water Commissioners and Elderly Housing.
Okay. So there's a lot more that still have to appoint as well. I assume we're the first one that appointed two people. So I assume a lot more appointments still to come.
Can I say something for a minute? Kitty's already been, Sturgis has already been appointed by the Elder Housing Committee.
Okay.
Planning Board has appointed Steph Harrison, I believe her last name is. Gino's Committee was going to appoint somebody. Conservation, I believe, appointed Allery. And then there's Darrell for Water Health. So basically everybody's in place.
So, um, so it sounds like a bunch of other appointments were made without going through the application process posted on the town website. So maybe we could continue to move ahead.
Yeah.
Done by others?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to simplify the admin.
Those were seats that were to be appointed by Concom, but they're not accepting outside at-large applicants.
Oh, so you did the appointments of the at-large.
Right.
There is, okay. All right. So it sounds like the folks that we would be looking at don't necessarily have to do this because others did not. Only because it's just more paperwork. I'm just trying to find out. So I know exactly what to tell people they do or do not have to do.
Well, we do believe the appointment process that we adhere to is good practice. I don't think it is mandated anywhere in the charter or anything in the bylaw about the water protection committee. So I think it's, it is, you're, you're an autonomous appointed board. I think you can do what you think is proper due diligence.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Right. We do it a little differently. We ask for an expression of interest and some background. So we don't do the same kind of questions. All right. Great. Thank you.
Good. Very good. So moving on, we got that. And I want to also thank Tom, Melinda for volunteering as well. Moving on is appointments, the Sherburne Arts Council. You can see the background material here. We have, I believe, three new appointments.
Yep. I moved to appoint Kristen Rainey, Kim Olin, Leanne Nguyen to the Sherburne Arts Council with Kristen Rainey's term to expire October 10th, 2023. Well, what, why are they different dates? I have a question.
Yeah, they're the same year.
Okay. George, I have Tish Gogan on the.
Oh, hi Tish. How are you?
Yeah. She can explain it better. It's got something to do with the state mandate or how it's worked.
So the Sherburne Cultural Council has never operated under the same timeline as the town. And that's something that we certainly can move towards. I'm not opposed to it, but it is, it has always been kind of a rolling appointee timeline. So our two reappointees, I'm going through it now because my six years on the board is up, so I won't be here. So I'm, I'm hoping to leave as clean a slate as I can for Leanne Nguyen, who's going to take over as Chair of the Cultural Council. And I didn't want Leanne and Kim to lose those three months. I mean, their term expired, expires in June. We could, I mean, in December, we, we could be doing this in December, but it just seemed. Easier for all to take care of the reappointment now. Like I said, if, if it's a priority to the town that we move to the town's timeline, that is something that we absolutely can work towards. It's just never been part of what the state mandates in terms of appointing your committee and, and. So it makes a little different. The committee can also be anywhere from five to 22 people, depending on what we feel is valuable.
All right. Well, I'll continue with my motion then to appoint Kristen Rainey for a term to expire October 10th, 2023. Kim Olin for a term to expire December 10th, 2023. And Leanne Nguyen for a term to expire December 10th, 2023.
Very good. Motion by George?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Okay. And just so Chuck is muted. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
I'll come back to Chuck when he's unmuted. George?
Hi.
Chuck? And Paul?
Yes.
Also, I just want to say thanks Tish for your six years of serving on this. I appreciate every volunteer that spends their time doing things for the town.
It's really been a labor of love. And, and also I'd like to recognize Anne Huppie as well, who's, who's at the sunset of her six-year term. She's done yeoman's duty and brought a passion and professionalism that is second to none. So thank you to Anne.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. And so moving on, next agenda item, agenda item number five, it's consideration of signing the, the November 3rd, 2020 election warrant. And an update on early voting for the November 3rd, 2020 election. I think Jackie Morris, Town Clerk is to present on this. Is Jackie on the call?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Your name.
I wanted you guys to just appoint some additional election workers. Normally I can just appoint them myself as emergency workers, but there are so many new people offering their services that I just felt. Be a little cleaner if you guys would just vote to appoint some additional workers. A lot of my workers are coming back. Some of them are still not comfortable working under the COVID conditions. So. Just have a lot, it's just not November 3rd that I need help. So. I was hoping that you guys could just vote to appoint those additional people.
I'll make, I'll make the motion. Do you have a question, Jeff?
I was just gonna ask with this list, which I looked through earlier, it looked like it was maybe six or eight people. Does this give you?
It's like, yeah, sorry.
Does this give you enough people? Are you still looking for people above and beyond this list?
No, actually I think it's more than six or eight. I think it's like 12 or 15, somewhere around 15 people. But no, I think I'll be, I'll be okay. I might not even be able to use all of them. Most of the people offered to work November 3rd. And I've been telling everyone, that's really not when I need the help.
Yes.
I need the help for the two weeks of early voting and also the, now the opening and depositing of the ballots that we're allowed to do.
Yes.
Jackie, do you want to remind people of the dates for early voting?
Um, pardon me?
Do you want to remind us of the dates for early voting?
Yeah. So early voting starts October 17th, which is a Saturday and runs straight through October 30th. So it's 14 days straight.
What are the hours of it?
Um, I've posted on the website, um, the Saturday and Sunday hours, I'm required to be open two hours, but I'm going to do four for each day. So Saturday and Sundays, it's going to be 12 noon to 4:00 PM. And then Monday through Friday, we're dictated by the state to be open. During our normal business hours, which for us, if town hall was open, would be 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon.
Eric, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So Jackie, can you explain to the public what the difference is between an absentee vote? An early voting vote and a vote on Election Day?
And a mail-in vote.
Well, actually the, the early voting and absentee balloting because of COVID, it's basically exactly the same thing. There's no excuse voting anymore. And it's all vote by mail. So the application, early voting is. Sorry. Early voting is. What the, what the new sense was absentee used to be the thing that if you were going to be away from the polls from seven in the morning till eight at night, if you couldn't make it that day, then you could absentee. Early voting is for any, anyone, it's no excuse voting, but they've changed absentee. It's, we're, we're trying to get the state to just do one thing because it's really just way too confusing having absentee and early voting.
So if someone is early voting.
Track them separately. So you can early vote by mail or you can early vote in person.
If somebody is early voting, do they go to town hall, go upstairs, sue a voting machine, fill out the ballot and put it into the voting machine?
No, they will not allow us to do that. That's what we wanted. No, they, they, for early voting, if you early vote by mail, you have to fill out the application and send it to the municipality. We put it in and then we mail you the ballot. If you early vote in person, you still have to fill out the affidavit envelope. Because your ballot is going to go into that envelope and then it's going to go in a box and I cannot, I, normally wouldn't, we would not be able to cast those ballots until November 3rd. But because of COVID, the legislature is now allowing us to cast those ballots early, but it's very regimented. I have to advertise to the Secretary of State's office, put it on the website. So when we're going to open the ballots and cast them into the machine. But no, when you early vote in person, you're still going to be putting it in an envelope and then just putting it in the box. It's not going into the actual image cast machine. It will get counted, but not until, it depends on when you vote, but not until either before Election Day or after Election Day. And then of course, I can't print out any of the tapes. I don't know who's winning. Everything is, you know, we try to do it as secretly as possible. So, but I'm not allowed to print out the tapes until actually November 3rd. So.
I also heard that people had the ability, the counting goes on, I think until November 10th. The ballots can be received. So the final vote tally won't be until November 10th.
Well, it's actually the 18th is when we have to submit our official, normally it's four days after the election that you have to do the official thing to the Secretary of State's office. This year it's, it's the 18th. So anyone, if they mail their ballot, it has to be postmarked. So I'm hoping anybody that sticks it in the mail, that the postman, that the post office actually stamps it because it has to be stamped November 3rd. And I have to receive it by the fifth, by the sixth of November at 5:00 PM. So it's a little complicated. People can, can still drop off their ballot. If they drop off their ballot, I have to receive it by November 3rd. But if they actually mail it, it has to be postmarked by November 3rd and I have to receive it by November 6th at 5 o'clock. And then those ballots, we don't count until after the 6th at 5:00 PM, which is just something totally new. We've never done anything like that before. So that's why the, the official tally will, will not be until after November 6th. So whenever I count, hopefully I won't have a lot of ballots and I'll be able to do the Sherburne's official tally pretty quickly after the 6th. But it's not due, the state's giving us until the 18th to submit everything. But I really don't think it's going to be that many ballots coming in, at least not for Sherburne.
So I've been trying to put together legislative package for next year's general court session. And one of the items discussed was the fact that some town clerk, I think in Franklin, had a box of ballots that never got into the ballot box. And so the idea was, why are ballots held in boxes as opposed to run into the machine when, when they're received? In other words, if the machine is set up and somebody wants to vote, why not have it go directly into the ballot box?
That is.
Vote.
Yes.
As opposed to having.
Right.
Boxes that the town clerk could forget to run through the machine and discover too late after the time period has gone by. And now there are all these people who are disenfranchised.
Well, they weren't disenfranchised. Elections Division sent the people down to Franklin. They just didn't get the official reason. They just didn't get all the ballots. There were like 2,700 ballots that didn't get counted and it took them like three days or something to count them all. But that's not going to be an issue in Sherburne. Every single ballot will get counted. I know where all of them are. And yeah, I'm not, I'm not concerned about that. But the Massachusetts Clerks Association did lobby quite hard to all of the legislature to allow us. To cast the ballots when they came in and, or at least during early voting, have people come in and early vote in person and cast the ballots. And they chose not to allow us to do that.
That fight's not over yet.
Yeah. So, yeah, I don't, I think mail-in, I think a lot of people are finding that voting by mail is really simple and easy and I could do it from home. And I think even when COVID hopefully goes away, I think that a lot of people are still going to want to vote by mail.
Yeah. Now this has changed, this, this whole thing is changing a lot of ways. We're going to do things in the future. No question. Post the vaccine and everything.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
So just one thing. So you know, um, town hall, I'm hoping that you guys are okay with town hall being closed, even though it's closed, we're not really letting people in. So we're just going to continue the same thing. If someone is not there to vote for the two weeks, they'll have to be outside and get their dump sticker outside or, or whatever. But unfortunately it's state mandated. I have to do it for 14 days straight.
Okay. And again, thank you for the update. We still need motions relative to the additional election workers and the, in the warrant as in, as providing your background material.
So to do them separately, first I moved to appoint the election war, election workers listed in the packet.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
George, Chuck, I'm always doing last because you're. Chuck?
I want to see which way the vote is going. I.
Paul?
Hi.
I am I as well.
To approve the warrant for the November 3rd to 2020 presidential election.
Motion and a second. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Chuck?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I am I as well. All right. Thank you very much.
Is there a third motion? Jackie, did you need a motion for the 14-day early voting?
That's, I don't need one, but if you, if you guys would like to make.
I just, I saw it on our, in our packet, there was a, that, that was one of, listed as one of the motions. So I didn't know if you needed it or not.
Well, that's up to you guys.
No, if you don't need it, I don't see any reason.
I don't need it. We don't need it. Okay. It's just, we're just going to run things the way we did for the other elections.
Perfect.
So what about a motion to close town hall for November 3rd?
Do we need to do that? Yeah.
Well, yeah. And I mean, it's basically this, the same thing. It's just allowing the people that are coming in are only allowed to vote, just like we have for the other.
Okay. I don't, I don't think I need to vote. I think it's something because right now town hall is closed. So they do things case by case, you know, the assesses office and like the dump stickers and so on like that.
It's actually.
Let's go ahead, David.
I was going to say it's, I mean, on Election Day, it's actually going to be open compared to what we're at right now. So offices.
The offices.
Right. And it's going to be like that for early voting as well during those times.
Yeah. For the 14 days, like, like Jackie said, during business hours and two hours or four hours during the weekends. It'll be technically open, but it would not be open for business. It'll be open only for voting.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I think, I think we're settled there. If not, someone let me know.
Thank you, Jackie, for all you're doing. We appreciate.
Thanks, Jackie.
You're welcome.
Okay. Up next, agenda item number six, Open Space Committee. We have a revised mission statement and work plan. Is Marion Nutra or Kelly McLean talk on?
I don't see.
I think Kelly's on here. I see Kelly's name.
Oh, yeah.
I don't see Marion.
Marion is not here. Marion stepped down as Chair of the Open Space Committee because she became Chair of the Planning Board. And I took over from her. The background of this request is that almost all open space committees, which are set up by state rules to prepare an open space and recreation plan. The committees dissolve after the plan is approved. Ours was approved well over a year ago, more than that. We wanted from the beginning and you approved in our original mission statement, not only that we would prepare the plan, but continue afterwards. To coordinate and assist in implementation. The revised mission statement that you have in your packet details that new mission in a, in a number of respects. And we feel it's very important because so many of these plans do sit on a shelf and nothing happens. Just very briefly, we first want to keep track of what is happening. Each one of us has a couple of town boards or committees that we're following. Help them if they're having trouble implementing and convey back to the appropriate party, which is many cases, most cases is you. When there need to be amendments, either to the master plan or to the open space and recreation plan with regard to the open space recommendations and goals. So we have been doing this for the past year and hope to continue.
Okay. Very good.
Kelly, quick question. The mission and goals were terrific, I thought. Does this have its own section on the town website?
The plan is on the website. I don't believe the mission is.
I think it, maybe there could be a section, almost an open space or whatever you decide to call it, section on the town website. So that people are interested in that. Cause I think the plan is under the. Because I think the plan is under the planning board, isn't it? I forget.
Yes.
You might consider, see what Marion thinks too. We might consider having an open space, just like we're doing with the sustainability coordinators. A little bit of a PR effort too, to show what we're doing and it making it more visible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions in the discussion, board members?
I think we need to vote to endorse the open space. I'll make a motion to endorse the Open Space Committee mission statement.
All right, motion and second. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Chuck? George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Thank you very much, Kelly.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, up next, agenda item number seven, consideration of, it says revote, but I kind of might think it's a first vote or whatever. Regarding deer hunting on town forest lands. Yeah.
Before we do that, can we chat, have Chuck check his mic? Because it just doesn't, it's hard to hear him.
Chuck's saying, I guess.
He'll want to speak on that.
Can you hear me now or do I need to turn up the volume?
That's actually pretty good.
Pretty good.
Yeah, that's better. Okay.
Yeah. But you're right, a couple of times when he voted, it was, it was tough to hear.
All right, thank you.
Um, is David Clean on the call? I see a Dave, is that David Clean?
No, no.
Hey Sean, do you know where David is?
He was on earlier.
Is that?
Dave, is that him?
I'll ask the Dave to unmute. I don't know who it is, but I'll ask that person to unmute.
I unmuted Sean.
Yeah, I don't know if he's there. I'm having my own trouble with power and I'm in the dark over here, as is the DPW, so. I'm, I have no contact with him.
I'll just simply read off what it says here in the, in the background topic. I think we kind of what this is about. David Clean, Chair of the, of the Forest, of the Forest Committee, appeared before the board to discuss a prior vote that was taken by the Select Board to allow hunting on town forest lands. At the meeting, the office unable to actually locate the vote that was taken. The board asked that the Assistant Administrator try to find when the vote was taken and bring this to back to the board. Upon further checking, a motion was found that took place back on 11/18/2010. So I guess we have to read in, so we're looking for a move to support the Town Forest Committee in implementing a pilot bow hunting program. Oh, this is what back in, back in 2010. With careful licensing considerations and all safety concerns, to consult the necessary, including animal control officer and border health, attempt to implement a program so that the pilot program at the Town Forest Properties Committee done during this current hunting season and report back to the board as a select one.
Second.
So we need to move, I guess.
Excuse me for a minute, George, I'm sorry to interrupt you. But the date is actually December 30th, 2020, not December 21st. Dave Colleen called me, so that would be from October 9th to December 30th.
Okay, so I'll move to allow hunting on town forest lands from October 9th, 2020 to December 31st, 2020.
Second.
Motion and a second.
We have some questions before we vote or?
Any further discussion?
I didn't see in the, maybe I didn't read it thoroughly enough. I wanted to know more about, you know, how many hours, whether it was going to be on weekends. I wanted to know, Sean's got his, he may know some of this. I'm not comfortable voting yet because I don't know the details.
Well, here's what I remember of the vote we made on Rocky Narrows. And I would want to, that is a good point. I think we've had similar restrictions. We said no Saturdays.
Yes.
And is hunting, basically it's daylight hours, which is all allowed by state. Like, I don't think we restricted hours beyond that. But like Rocky Narrows in particular is very popular on Saturdays. And there's no hunting just on Sundays in general, I believe, in, in the state. So I think it's no Saturdays, no Sundays automatically.
But I would like to have these details before, I don't feel comfortable voting right now until I, I didn't, unless I misread it. And well, Sean can maybe fill us in because he's got his hand raised. But unless I misread it, I didn't see those details. Let me unmute Sean.
Yeah.
He's unmuted.
Hey.
Go ahead.
So I'm on the phone with my father. He lost internet over in Mill, where he was at, so. Oh, sorry, I'm, he's in Maine, so he lost it up there as well. Essentially, the vote you guys took before had those restrictions for the, but it was strictly for the Rocky Narrows property. So the best I understand it, it's going to be the same rules and limitations. The no Saturdays, the same time limit. Obviously, no Sundays because I think that's state law. So it would be the same, it's just opening up the other properties.
Well. Jeff, I think it's a great suggestion. I would move to be include those conditions that we had included for Rocky Narrows in this approval. Because we had a really good discussion of that last time.
We did.
And I don't think we're, I don't think anybody's suggesting that we change, we're changing any of the rules. I think it's just setting the dates.
Vote, so they were.
Yeah, and the, and the rules, it was vetted quite a bit last time. I do remember that. And I believe the Saturday exclusion was actually in the vote last time. So I think it's important to note in there. We can, maybe like Chuck said, to simply say, you know, authorize it with the same exclusions that we made with Rocky Narrows.
I could take that as a friendly amendment.
If I could on discussion.
Yeah.
I just want to summarize why this experiment began in the beginning. The, the board voted this like 10 years ago. And it was based on a presentation of a couple of factors. One was that there is an overpopulation of deer. And with the overpopulation of deer, it's actually harder for deer to survive and to thrive when there's too many of them. They compete for the same food sources. And by the time spring rolls around, some of the deer are pretty thin, starving, not doing well. So there's too many deer. The second issue was that deer carry the tick that leads to Lyme's disease. There's a cycle. The scientists tell us that the, the ticks stay on the deer, then they fall off and they get attached to smaller animals. And then along comes a human being and they get on a human being. And the next thing you know, you're in the hospital and feeling pretty bad. So it was these two factors working together to help the deer themselves and to provide better health opportunities for our citizens that caused this issue to come forward. The experiment that took place 10 years ago was reported back as being successful. It worked well, no one was disturbed by it. We didn't have any loud protests. We didn't have anybody saying that they got shot or, or interfered with in any meaningful way. So we already had the experiment, the experiment worked. There's no reason from the history now of what's happened in the past for us not to go forward with this kind of programs set forth in this motion. So I would urge adoption of this motion.
Yeah, the Lyme's disease problem is not on the way, nor is the devastation on all of our landscaping. When we lived on Saddle Brook Road, half of the residents had Lyme disease. And two families, everyone in the family had Lyme disease. There's a huge open area. So yeah, I've, controlling the deer population is, is good on multiple fronts. So I. Concur. Especially for the health of the deer.
I have a new pet, a new pet for you to consider because this was a topic in the Joint Dover Sherburne Board of Health COVID call today. Possum, the average possum eats 5,000 to 10,000 deer ticks a year. So keep your possums, they love deer ticks. Keep your possums, don't, don't get rid of your possums.
Chickens as well. Well, yeah, and, and thank you, Paul, for that. I know we've discussed this 10 years ago, as well as within the last couple of years when we did Rocky Narrows. And I think it was David came into actual presentation about Lyme disease. And I think that, I think we're all on board with this. I appreciate Jeff's point about some of the details, though. I will tell you, Jeff, though, that if we, right now, we actually have a motion and a second with a friendly amendment to put the same restrictions on, as we did in Rocky Narrows. I will tell you that the restrictions we put on Rocky Narrows, I thought were pretty restrictive. They were protective and they seem to have worked. It's pretty active there right now, I think, you know, going on. And that satisfies me at least, I was part of that discussion. I think it might have been before you were on the board, though.
No, I wasn't on the board, but I think it was in the room. So I'm fine with that. I just would like that language to be in the, whatever we end up approving. We can delegate that to David or whatever we do with the vote. But I would like it to be included there. Because who knows, five years from now, that, you know, if we keep passing it on and it doesn't include the original language, it's not complete.
Yeah, and, and George took that as a friendly amendment.
Yes.
So I'm going to finish through the roll call vote.
So I, I voted I then, you asked me already.
Yep, okay. Right, Chuck, how do you vote?
Oh, hi, but I'd like to note that it was not a friendly amendment. It was an unfriendly amendment, so.
It was kind of a passive aggressive amendment.
I made it friendly because I accepted it.
That's right. George, how do you vote?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I am I as well. All right, thank you very much. Um, okay, so moving on, the agenda item number eight. Consideration of Town Roadway Projects. Sean Clean, DPW. Sean gave me a little preview of this.
Maybe, are you sharing a screen, Sean?
No, can you hear me?
Yes.
If I share my screen, it's going to be the backseat of my truck. My house is dark, I got no internet in the house. And at, at the moment, I got no internet at the DPW. So if someone wants to share that, they can. Or we can just walk through it.
Hold on.
We did?
I don't know.
I can look for it. Are you looking for it, Eric?
Yeah, I just hate the.
You have it, David, or no?
I'm looking.
Why are you looking for it? Sean, question, where did these, would it ever in Western fall in that prioritization of roads to be done? It was done, God, three years ago?
Yeah, well, very high. Western for two reasons. So both of them are a three. I don't have the full thing in front of me again, I'm sitting in my truck. They were both at a three. Everett, I think, was falling to a four. Of course, there's a slight difference because when you talk about a road that's as long and large as Western Ave, the, the cost to let it fall to a four is, you know, a whole order of magnitude higher than, than some of the smaller roads. Like, if you let Ash Lane fall to a four, which it actually is, so be it. You know, it's quite a bit shorter and it, it can stay at that level for a while. We, we know that we, if we let Western Ave or some of the other numbered routes go, then they cost a fortune to fix. So they were quite, I guess, I don't have the list, but they were next on the list. I had presented, I, I think it was even pre-COVID.
Got it.
The list, some of it fell off. There was some work we, we didn't line up because of kind of the shutdown. So spring work didn't necessarily happen as well as it should have. So we'll jump back as if I knew what was going to happen in the past 24 hours. The first thing I was going to mention was just trees. This is also an update, not just roadwork. So it's probably no, it's probably no secret that we still have an issue with trees. A lot of them are laying on the ground right now, wrapped up in EverSource's wires. But the, the main hit is we, we've taken several hundred trees down this year. EverSource was in early in the year, then they left for a while. They had other priorities in other towns. They came back and they're making a pretty heavy hit right now. But we're still on a trend to lose a couple hundred oak trees a year, right on the roadside. So we're hardly keeping up with it. And this drought this year, we'll, we'll see what happens. It looked like a fair amount of trees started falling off before they, you know, the oaks shouldn't be losing their leaves yet. They shouldn't even be changing yet. So if you have an oak tree that's brown, it's dead. It's not coming back next year. So we fear we're going to see a lot of that. The storm damage, although, isn't, isn't dead trees right now. The storm damage is the heavy live trees because they're, they're taking a hit from the wind.
So can I ask a question, Eric?
Yeah, go ahead. I can't find the, I can't find the presentation.
On the screen, you don't see my.
Someone's sharing it right now.
Oh, okay.
I brought it up.
I have it up.
So my, my question is this. You're, you're recommending various activity to take place. And you've used all these words, and I'm not sure I know the difference between one set of words and the other set of words. So I'll ask you to explain. You want a shim coat Everett Street. And that's going to lead to a double stone chip seal. And then you have something called a rubber chip seal. What are these things? And how are they different from each other?
That's a great question. I'm glad you asked it. Anyone that lives on kind of the other side of town, Lake Street, as well as Pleasant Street, for those who like to walk and travel on Pleasant. Those were just double chip, double stone chip seals. Last year, we did Farm Road. We just finished Lake Street a couple of weeks ago. That is a great road surface and one we've used for decades now in town. It is a candidate for many of our roads. It's not a candidate for our higher speed roads. We could never use that on Western Ave. We couldn't use it on Elliott, North Main, South Main, Washington. Last year, we did Elliott Street from the lights to the South Natick Line. That was a rubber chip seal. So what that does is it retains the base material and puts another top coat on above. But you have to, you have to reshape the road, so you shim it. Just like we did on Lake Street earlier, this really late, it was late spring. And we did Farm Road last year, same thing. You, you run over it with a shim coat, you get the shape back. You strengthen up the areas that are rutted and/or crumbling. And then you go back. The advantage to it, doing it right now, is the shim coat will save the road. A bad winter will destroy the road. So if we were to get a bad winter or even a moderate winter, Everett Street would most likely become a gravel road by the end of the winter. The plows will completely destroy it. Western Ave is in slightly better condition. But the trucks beat on Western Ave in a way that almost no other road gets. So when you get a pothole on Western Ave on a rain or in the winter, it completely destroys the base of the road within a day. And we have people blowing tires and, and, you know, we have liability issues if we don't get out there and fix it. So we're going to see a rapid decline on either of those roads if we allow them to go. So if we shim them now, it's money well spent and it may save the road to the point where we, you know, the intent is next year, we can go with a stone chip seal on one and the rubber chip seal, which is it would be four or five times more expensive, as I, as I stated, to rebuild that road. Either mill it down or fully reclaim it if we let it go.
Thank you.
Your question, Paul, do you understand that?
Yes, I think so. Thank you.
And Sean, can I go back to the trees? I just want to, I, I know, I, I know you were busy the last day, but I sent you an email from a resident who contacted me because they were concerned about a tree that's on town property, but like, is over their house and branches are falling out of it. They can't cut it down. They can't get to a planning board meeting. Somebody, I think the, they contacted the tree warden. The tree warden said it's going to be, you know, months before they can get to a meeting. So this person's kind of like stuck. But I mean, what do you tell people like that?
Well, it's difficult because they are in a unique situation. There, there's not too many houses in town that, that the house sits that close to the roadside tree. There's very few houses in town in that situation. So it's difficult. Because they are healthy trees from, from a distance, but they have a lot of flaws in them. And, and, you know, frankly, most of our roadside oaks do. They get a good growing year and they, and they take off because they get all sorts of sun and, and water. And then, you know, they overcome their weakness until they're too big and, and heavy. The issue is that area of town has had massive frequency of power outage and trees down. But it's, it, it, it's not just that tree. So. Um, so every time we get a windstorm, Green Lane, especially that end, ends up with an EverSource issue, lines on the ground, but it's every tree around. Um, so unless you're new to town, you realize we don't really make a habit of taking every oak tree down that looks like it might fall. That one, um, we looked at a couple of times. There was one heavy limb towards the house. Before we got a chance to do anything with it, it came down in a windstorm. Um so it it either keeps the tree gearing, which which hasn't happened and isn't happening at the moment, or it needs to be deemed dangerous. We're going to go look at it again.
Okay.
I'll be perfectly honest.
But I'm just even thinking like I drove down to the end of, I mean, it's it's fascinating to see if you if anybody drives to the end of Hollis Street where it meets Nason Hill. And if you look at a tree, a tree that fell and it's cut up on the side of the road, it's completely hollow in the middle. That is, I mean, it was a huge tree that you could see had was in terrible shape. And I mean, that's just dang so dangerous that we have so many of those trees on our road sides.
This one's by far, of course, the same way. If you go down and ones that cut them down, but they were pretty um empty in the core.
Just a quick thing. I the one George mentioned, I think is the same one I emailed Sean about. I think it was earlier today or yesterday. Um.
I mean, it's huge.
It can. I think it can be. I don't know. It can be. It has to be deemed hazardous. And is it? There's a criteria if it can be deemed hazardous or not, and um.
Especially since it's over their house. I think I think we should see what we can do for about that.
I thought the same thing. Particularly if it is it has been it has been determined. I did confirm it has been determined to be a town tree. It's actually pretty good fiscal liability on the town if that actually does go down on the house. So I think outside of, you know, safety and danger, I think it might actually be in uh our best interest to uh do that. Okay.
We're going to move that tomorrow or Monday, first we go to drive up the street, which we can't do at the moment.
Yeah. All right, um, any other questions for Sean or anything else on on this planned road work here? Sean, this is just an update. Like, you don't need a vote from us or anything, right?
No, I'm trying to get a vote because what we have is this is the end of the construction season. Um, each year, they either they either fill it out or they have a window. I'm so I'm trying to get the shim coat done on Everett Street and uh Western Ave and it in many places, it's not 100% required that the Board of Selectmen vote on those. We're not using uh Chapter 90 money. That's already spent, but uh we we tend to do that here. We'd be coming back for the remainder of the money next year. Um, still on this fiscal, but next next season.
I'll make a motion to support the request of Sean of the direct DPW director to perform the road work on Everett Street and Western Ave.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Uh, all in favor of Jeff?
Hi.
Uh Chuck, I'll with you. You unmute. Uh George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Um Chuck?
Question, I'm sorry. Should raise this before we voted. I'm assuming the motion is for the 35,000 for the work on Everett Street and 60,000 for Western Avenue, that that's the dollar amounts where this motion relates to?
Yeah.
Okay, bye.
Okay, and I am I as well. Very good. Make my commute easier. Smooth out Western Ave. I I already vented to Sean about my that trench on Western Ave, so I will take up time here.
Or the giant pothole that I have to swerve around every time. I drive on Western Ave all the time now, too.
I've heard stories. I don't know if it's true or not, but I've read it from a couple of sources that the Boston Public Works Department found out how Mayor Mino would actually drive to work and actually pave those roads.
Sean, I did see you filled in that giant pothole on Western, though. That was circled in pink.
Yeah, I don't know who circled it, but uh they didn't report it, so I hit it and realized somebody made that pink and it was filled within an hour. That's the type of pothole we get, and that's that's exactly why we're doing it.
Right.
They open up wide and and deep.
Who's ever sharing the screen? If you could unshare the screen, you know, be.
Jeff.
Okay, so up at the end here, we have um routine business. Are there any select board reports?
Well, actually, I do want to discuss one thing. Um, with what happened on Tuesday night, I think we need to have, we need to, we don't have an interim police chief. We have Lieutenant Bento has been serving in that capacity, just as the next ranking officer, but we do need to appoint an interim police chief until we have until we decide what we're doing with that position.
Okay, I know for now, just like it's been for a little while, actually, Bento is the highest ranking officer, so he is automatically in charge, but you are correct, I believe. Um, the effect of tomorrow, I think there will there will not be a chief. I've asked it to go on the agenda for the 22nd, and David can come with a proposal for a recommendation for an acting chief, and then we can also discuss the the search for the next permanent chief as well.
Eric, are you looking for a process to appoint an acting chief or a recommendation on the acting chief?
Yeah, I don't. Yeah. Like what we need to do. Basically, I had an explanation of what we need to do.
Do you want to do a hiring process for a um an interim chief? And the full-time chief?
Well, we're looking for a recommendation for you, David. What do we have? Like, what should we do? I know with the fire department, we had to post it, and we had multiple candidates for an interim.
Right.
Fire chief. Like, are we going to be doing the same thing with this, or are we just going to appoint the person who's been serving in the capacity while we because we're going to immediately start a search for a permanent chief?
Yeah, well, that would be the recommendation for a period of, you know, no more than six months until we get um hopefully get somebody on board.
And Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'll go ahead, Chuck. Sorry.
The George, I think the rationale is the different. I served on both of the fire chief uh search committees. Um, and that search for an interim was, I think, slightly different in that the candidate we were talking about were very high on, but was did not have a lot of experience. I think this is a very different scenario where you have uh an officer who's been on the 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 department for a long, long time. So in my mind, the rationale is different, but I want to be careful because we didn't post this, so maybe we need to be talking about this at the next meeting.
Yeah.
I met I met with the entire department yesterday on a call, and I had told them that we would be discussing it on the 22nd.
Okay, so let's table it until then.
But that is one of their two concerns that they brought up.
Absolutely. Yeah, we will discuss it then. Both processes and uh for interim and for uh full-time or permanent, whatever you want to call it. Um, the only other report I had is that, you know, I've gotten some complaints about EverSource's lack of response during this last storm. I guess they're now in town. I think I heard that they're now um have their line trucks in here, you know, and I know Paul's talked about it before that this, you know, Sherburne's supposed to have some priority because we're all on wells and we need our electricity, even just to have basic um, you know, basic running water. I don't know if that's people forgotten about that with some way to kind of reprioritize that, or if anyone has any contacts. I used to have a contact, but I don't anymore. It's a DPU, Department of Public Utilities.
I have I have a lot of contacts with EverSource.
Is this a shame that they they basically the trucks right now are finally getting into town?
Yeah.
You know?
I I think and over the summer, I was disappointed with their response on in my corner of town. We had an outage on a Monday and then an outage on a Wednesday, and they never had a good estimate of when the time was going to be, when the power was going to be back, and I just they used to be better about it, and I feel like it's fallen off.
Yeah, that's why I feel the same way. I think it's kind of they kind of exactly. They were good about it and they slacked off, and maybe they're going for the higher density of customers to get more just get more meters uh rolling or what it is. But I still think it's appreciation. If you're in Framingham and your wa- power goes out, you still have running water. You still use your bathroom and you still take a shower. Might be a cold shower. But you still can, you know, and uh we don't have that here, and I don't know if we can reengage them. Or uh, but I maybe I'll talk to Zach when he's done. He had he had a he finally had some success with a community liaison there through Linsky's office, I guess, from what I understand. All right, that's all I had. Um, David, do you have any reports?
No, I was just going to mention the hiring thing, so that's.
Okay. And is Sharon? I see her there. Sharon, are there any fiscal reports?
Oh, I just I just want to let you guys know that we're rolling out uh remote access to Vadar. Uh, so it's going to be a great uh a great step for all the budget makers. Uh, we're going to give them access to the system. They're going to be able to do all sorts of reporting, and then they're also going to have access to the budget module. So we're moving full steam ahead on that, and I'm very excited about it.
Very good.
That's it.
All right, so there's no more?
Are we going to wait in on the schools issue on the computers for the schools? Is she still?
Yes, I yeah, I reached out to Dawn and let her know that we will we'll have to look at it closer to Thanksgiving, beginning of December, so.
Okay.
This point. Yes, exactly.
All right, thanks.
Great. Very good with that. And I call it close to the open session and adjourn to executive session. Um, we have one agenda item to discuss a strategy or respect to threaten a potential litigation, and the chair declares, and the chair does so declare, that discussion during an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the select board and the town. To discuss the town libraries pursuant to MGL 30A, Section 21A, subsection 3. I'll take a roll call. I'll take a motion and a roll call vote.
Oh.
In second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Um, Jeff?
Why? Some discussion?
Oh, do you want to? Oh, sure. Do you want to discuss just going into executive session?
Yeah.
It could be an executive session right now, if that's what you mean.
People have been asking me what is going on with the library. And I'm wondering if we could have some kind of public session report on what's going on with the library. Because although we go into executive session and this, there's a lot of things to discuss in the executive session, the problem with executive sessions is that the public doesn't know what's going on, and therefore it's easy to think that nothing is going on. And that's that's not the case, and I want to assure our listeners that there actually are things going on with the library, and there's progress is being made. And I think that it would be nice to have some part of that discussion in public so that they see and know what's going on.
You know, that's a good point, and it's been right about two months since we had our last OPM um update. So David, on the 22nd, how does our how does our agenda look on the 22nd? How how big are we getting?
Uh, we're pretty good right now.
Okay, I I like the OPM to give a presentation and give an update on the 22nd. That's a very good point, Paul. I think it's it's worthy of having having the onus project manager come in and uh give a status of what's going on. I know people are starting to see bricks go up, so something's happening.
Yeah, we had a we had an LBC meeting Monday night. Um, so we did have an update with that team, and um I believe I'd have to double check. I believe the library, you know how they were doing the monthly status reports? I believe they've issued a new status report on the library website. So maybe I'll reach out to them and ask them to um post on LinkedIn or not LinkedIn on the next door, the uh notice that that's on the library website.
Yeah, Jeff, it's Brian. I can do that.
Yeah.
Oh, we're good, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. I think we were mid-vote. I think, Jeff, you'd already voted yes to go to executive session.
Hi.
Chuck, had you voted?
Uh, nobody would. I.
Okay, uh, George?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. All right, if we can turn off the recording, or I don't know if we do a separate link for this. I don't think we do. I think we stay on this.